Y'all ever heard of student reassignment? According to some definitions, temporary reassignment, also known as in-school suspension, means a student attends school but is secretly isolated from one or more classes while under supervision. Temporary reassignment should not exceed five separate school days. Involuntary assignment, this means involuntary movement from one classroom to another. While student reassignment is the process by which a parent or guardian can request enrollment at a school that is not located in the school's head here for their one or five biggest residents. So if you were to be located outside the school, like, if you, I mean, if you don't go to school your zone, I mean, it probably can't happen. But in one state, parents are sharing concerns about the Wake County reassignment. They're planning on talking about this with the board, the Board of Education. Let's take a look.
Cities like the southern and western parts of the county could see the most changes from this. Many of the parents sharing concerns with the board tonight are from the western part of the county, and they say this is far from the first time that they're impacted by reassignment. Wake County's latest school assignment shuffle has parents feeling stressed.
We feel that parents are being blindsided.
About a dozen parents share their concerns about Wake County's draft reassignment plan with the school board.
I have a lot of concerns.
Partiba Iapin's trial would not only switch schools, but also calendars.
They forged friendships. I think it's going to be a big impact for them, you know, mentally. And then they have to re-establish like a routine friendship, and change of calendar would be the worst.
She's part of a group of several parents from two schools in the Morrisville area who say they're once again impacted by a reassignment plan.
Now they're switching us again within four years.
The draft of next year's plan reassigned students from thirteen elementary schools, six middle, and two high schools. The district says the changes are necessary to improve transportation, relieve overcrowding at some schools, and help fill new schools.
The school system doesn't want to reassign students. It's part of our natural business to deal with the growth that we have in our district. And so we really take time to look at the data, try to limit the impact as much as possible.
In many cases, students can request to stay at their current school, but won't be able to ride the school bus.
For a family where both parents work, this is a big problem.
But Hamid Fischwastrau says he'll find a way to pay for private transportation if he has to, not wanting his third grader to leave the school he loves.
I hope my son does not see this because he still does not know this is gonna happen. And I cannot even dare to tell this to him because first he'll freak out.
The board will vote on a final version of the plan November twenty-first. The district says that's when they'll know the exact number of students that reassignment could impact. Guys, back to you.
So, Galat, quick question. One of the parents in your story said they're considering a private driver. How much would that cost?
Yeah, he says he priced it out. This is for a school about three miles from his house, and he says it could cost upwards of two hundred dollars a month. Live and rolling, Gilam Malaman, CBS 17 News.
All right, Galat, thank you so much.
It'd be interesting to see what happens there.
And speaking of, speaking of what happens, I mean, you may remember our election special, we talked about that proposition. Momentary teachers rejoice as the Prop A passes. So... With the election time here, let's give you some more details about Proposition A.
What Prop Nine's passage means to them, Madal.
Thank you, Rudy. The Texas Retired Teachers Association states that because Prop Nine has passed, it will be the first time in twenty years that education retirees have received a raise. Depending on their retirement date, they will receive a permanent two, four, or six percent increase in their pensions. Texans overwhelmingly voted in favor of Prop Nine, a proposition that will give retired teachers and public school employees an increase in their monthly retirement checks. Dr. Nancy Vedder, president of the Corpus Christi chapter of the American Federation of Teachers, says this raise is long overdue.
You know, it just, it just warms my heart because teachers right now and in the past have sacrificed so much of their own lives for the lives of our students and our families.
With Prop Nine passing, a total of three point three billion dollars will be making its way from the state's budget into the teacher-retirement system of Texas.
In such hard times as we're having now, with so many unkind things going on in the world, it's good to know that we're still taking care of our teachers even after retirement.
Dr. Gloria Montalvo spent nearly forty years in education, twenty-nine years as a counselor, and ten as a teacher. She says that Prop Nine's passage is a big win.
Every time you strengthen the public schools in any way, whether it's through the retirement system, whether it's through pay raises, you are strengthening our educational system.
The Texas Retired Teacher Association reports that around four hundred and twenty thousand retirees will be benefiting from Prop Nine's passage. With the cost of living continuing to rise and inflation making people's financial situations more difficult, Montalvo says that Prop Nine will ease retirees' struggles.
It means that they will have an easier time meeting their needs, their food, their doctor bills, whatever, you know, is a priority on their agenda.
Dr. Nancy Vedder tells me that the amount of support that Texas showed for teachers at the ballot on Election Day gives her hope for the future of retired educators. Rudy?
Thank you, Mary. Wow. What a great story. With football coming up, the playoffs coming up, will the weather affect all the football playoffs? Alan Holt is gonna give some explanation, and then later on, road rage. Stay with us. There's gonna be some football happening coming up on Thursday and Friday. It's the playoffs, but the playoffs coming made up, so with weather conditions, what do you need to know? What should you know about these weather conditions with football? I mean, we know that lightning, if lightning strikes, it may delay all the games. But what's gonna happen to all home games when it rains? Here's Alan Holt.
Yeah, we have a special guest with us in the sports segment, and Alan, I love you, but if you're here, that's usually not for anything good for sports. So we have football playoffs kicking off tomorrow and Friday, so tell us kind of what we can be historical. It's an interesting forecast because Friday's gonna be the rainier of the two days, right? Thursday's the iffy-er day because I do think we're gonna have a chance for some thunderstorms that could mean some lightning. So you see on the left side there, we had to throw the yellow flag out for the possibility of delay of game on Thursday. Friday, it's gonna be sloppy, it's gonna be cool, it'll be light rain, patchy drizzle, but I don't think we'll see the lightning, which means the games will go on. It's just not gonna be comfortable for people.
Yeah, so Bloods fans, remember earlier this year, we had a night where the game just completely got wiped out due to lightning. Now, those were non-district games, so they didn't need to be made up. These are playoff games. They need to be played. So, you know, every time lightning strikes, it's thirty minutes. So what can we expect, especially Thursday night?
So the Thursday night, there's gonna be two things to watch. One, there will be some widely scattered stuff in the afternoon, early evening. And then, as the night goes on toward the later parts of the games, if that front comes in a little earlier, that could also lead to additional lightning. So Thursday, I don't think the rain chances as high as it will be on Friday in the games, but the lightning risk Thursday, that's what we're gonna have to look for.
So, you know, is this something that's gonna be consistent all night? Are these games gonna have to be finished Friday or Saturday? What, you know, how are you looking?
I think Friday, you're good. It's just the sloppy weather. Thursday, again, if you just happen to be unlucky and the stadium is around one of those widely scattered thunderstorms, then you'll have to delay it. And then if it gets late into the night, that's when that front starts to come into play. And you could be looking at delays into Friday or the weekend.
Okay, so a lot of to be determined.
We will see. We will see. That's, you know, that's like important, you know? People ask me sports predictions. That's why I don't do sports predictions, but weather, we need the weather prediction. So.
All right, so we will see is the official determination. Either way, these games gotta get in.
And these games have long gotta get in, so that cold front timing is through Thursday to Friday, Thursday to Friday morning. Two to four inch rain through Monday, wind twenty, thirty miles per hour on Friday, and a twenty, twenty-five temperature drop. So now you know. You probably don't know what's going on. All right. Proposition A may not be passed, but if it doesn't pass, what's gonna be next for that Proposition A? Take a look.
Right now hotels are are not a topic we should be focused on. I don't know how much we should stress that, but that was the key word that got a lot of people out to say, no, we don't want to pay for a hotel.
Other members of the council say they learned a lot.
The whole premise was to improve the convention center. We have a facility. We need to take care of it. It's got a lot of issues.
All feedback is good, and so that way we can take that feedback and we could, what is it, go back and, and, you know, look at where our challenges are, where we is, you know, communicate to those that probably had the largest opposition and, you know, take that in mind before we present something to the public again.
The mayor tells us the vote was an important part of the process to find a viable plan.
How do we take what we've heard and move us forward to define a road, you know, that leads us to the same place?
There is no timetable for a new plan, but council members say the next couple of years will be all about talking with the community.
I think we need to go back and meet with those community leaders, ask them how they passed the type A in the first place. Ask what the groups that are gonna be affected by the type A going forward, you know, include some of those important things like affordable housing. And I think we need to relook at Sewol.
Brian Burns, three news.
All right, thank you, Brian, for that. So now I mean, now we know what happened. So if you're concerned about Prop A, now you know why it's not passed because no one wants to pay for the hotels. And if we did an outdoor show, it'd be like, what are your thoughts about Proposition A? It just wouldn't be like that. I mean, if I did an outdoor show, then what concern about Proposition A? It, I mean, everyone's vote, everyone voted no on Proposition A, but they voted on teachers getting raises. I'm not saying that y'all didn't do the right thing. I'm just, I'm not, I'm not saying y'all, I'm not saying y'all are gonna be, you don't have to vote on that, vote on teachers, you're right, you're retiring raises. I'm just saying. I mean, it's your, it's your decision. It's decision election twenty twenty-three, but the aftermath about all this? We heard from Proposition Nine, now what about Proposition A? So now we know what's going on right now, so. Now we know more details about what's happening. Do you have a cold happening? Well, there were some natural remedies came, that came with cold symptoms, but do they work? Take a look.
You've got a cold, but the medicine you've been using for years is no longer on the shelf.
Important news about the leading decongestant used by millions of people.
We are learning that some of the colds and allergy medicines that you might use don't actually work.
Some popular cold remedies are no longer being sold because a key ingredient, phenylephrine, was found to be ineffective when taken in pill form.
These are not effective, and the problem is they're incredibly popular.
Phenylephrine gets metabolized, which means it gets processed by your body when you take it orally, and it's not making it to your nasal passages in its original form, which is what it needs to be in order to be effective.
But it can still be effective.
Phenylephrine is effective when it's delivered directly inside the nose.
We all know there's no cure for the common cold, so what does Dr. Celine Gounder do when she's under the weather?
I much prefer a saline nasal spray, which instead of drying you out, helps loosen things up so you can blow it out. And then finally, if you have, you know, aches and pains, headache, fever, Tylenol or Advil can be very helpful to bottom that.
Many folks suffering from a cold are taking to social media to share home remedies they swear by, like raw ginger juice.
I take at least three to four shots throughout today and for the next couple of days, and it typically gets it all out of my system.
It's like magic.
Breathing in steam through your nose can relieve congestion. Using a neti pot like this to clean out your nasal passages can also help. But maybe the best advice is how to avoid getting sick in the first place.
Wash your hands. If you are sick, stay away from other people. If you know other people are sick, you might wanna stay away from them. I know a lot of people are reluctant to wear masks, but you know what? They work.
Like we were stressing out during the COVID nineteen pandemic, like I've always said, stay within six feet, wash your hands. I mean, COVID, I mean, the at-home tests are available, so try to know next time you get sick, try to understand tips. All right, come up next, it's all about the road rage. What you need to know about, what you need to know next time someone flips you off the bird while they're driving. Stay with us. There's nothing like the sound of a good old crash happening. Boom! Unless like boom! Like that, that's a crash. But it all happens because of two words: road rage. Road rage is there where people just flip out and flip on the bird. Like flip on the bird and all, I mean, they just like sit there and go, oh, give them the bird and yell at them saying, come on, move it. And it gets escalated. It escalates to where it gets involved in a, in a crash. Let's take a look at some of the instant car and car crashes. See, that's the car that caused the car crash.
It looks like the passenger is trying to climb out the window, then the woman comes and opens the door and drags the passenger out. Overall, an insane clip with little context.
How about this one? This is caused by a FedEx driver.
The idiot FedEx ground driver sped up behind the camera's car in their neighborhood and then passed her on the left when she was trying to turn left into her own home.
The same day every year.
I know, I know, I'm so in the mood to give it my all. I have, I have come up with extravagant, extravagant. So I've walked in that room more dressed up than all of you combined.
You were Wonder Woman one year.
I've waited long enough. I'm gonna go now, was likely the thought process going through that guy's head. Vehicles. But we were okay. Guys! Anything to avoid stopping for two minutes at a red light, am I right? If they damaged something, at least it was only their own car.
Let me see, this driver already was hitting that gardener right there.
Cars can be repaired, but people can't, and thankfully he didn't hit anyone else. Hopefully this was a lesson learned.
It may be a lesson learned. Take a look at this one. At a two-lane intersection.
Speeding, reckless endangerment, failure to indicate improper lane change, and illegal use of the shoulder. There could be more. However, they stop at the red light as if that is the only law that makes sense to them. It honestly baffles me.
How about a parking lot? Kind of crash into somebody's car.
For this guy for committing this head-on run would be forcing him to drive a Geo Metro for five years.
A Geo Metro.
What a terrible road layout. If you can't legally get to that lane, why is it even there? The left two lanes were backed up. The driver of the camera crashed into, said someone waved them in, saying it was safe to turn. Surprise, surprise, it wasn't. Never trust a vehicle that leaves its blinker on. They are extremely unpredictable. Man, of course, couldn't put anything in the room that wanted to end. Nothing fits. Other than that, it was a good night. You can clearly see that buffoon staring at their phone. He should be in prison for committing a crash like this, especially when he flipped the scene too.
That's enough. That's enough. I think we all get the picture here when it comes to these car crashes and road rages. Road rages and a car crash and them flipping off the bird. But take a look at this viral video in Columbus, Ohio, unhinged in real life.
Ford truck F-150, and it's EJY thirty-nine, thirty-two is the license plate. Correct. Yes, and he's like screaming at cars right now and trying to cut everybody off. So he literally just, you know, rolled the window down and coasted out because he's clearly realizing we're on the phone. I'm sorry, it's a dark green. I don't, I can't tell if it's a dark green or black, but that's the license, license number or the license plate number. Is it a Ford truck F-150, and it's EJY thirty-nine, thirty-two is the...
Here's a second one.
Oh yeah, here we go. Oh shit, this is great. Yeah, no, he just kicked the door on him. Oh yeah, he popped him in his nose, split his nose already.
My question is, where are the bystanders? Could've stopped the video and then break up the fight. That's all he would've done, and I would've been handled properly. How about this one? It's gone rain, it's gone on, but it's funny. And finally, this man pulls a gun, fires a warning shot during this road rage. Yikes. All right, now that we've seen all these road rage incidents happening online, what can you do if next time in road rage? Well, if you see someone that's road raging at you while down the window from beating the bird, you need to immediately take a picture of the license plate and then call your local law enforcement wherever you're at. If you're in the Portland area, if you're in the Corpus Christi area, and you see some, if you see any, if you see somebody yelling out road rage at you, you take a picture of their license plate, then you call, you call nine-one-one or the local police department, and you give them that license plate number. And you explain to them, okay, he's doing this, he's shouting profanity, he's all this, he's all that, he rolled down his window saying bombs, whatever. The police will take care of, take care of it. I mean, it's all about aggressive drivers. Don't take it personally. Brave, count to ten, focusing your destination, find positive distractions. Explore aggressive strategies. If another driver is acting aggressively, you can safely change lanes, gradually slow down, exit the highway, don't... Don't make... No, it's a pro ca, I can't even pronounce it. Don't make eye contact, don't respond to the other driver, and don't gesture. In other words, don't be giving them the bird. Practice polite driving habits. Avoid taillining. Avoid cutting off vehicles, avoid speeding, avoid leaving, avoid leaving a high beam headlights on, and avoid driving your angry, upset, or droughty. Here's some more tips. Stay calm, keep your motion in check. Plan ahead, anticipate any delays, pose for your driving, avoid creating situations that may cause provocation. Give angry drivers plenty of room, avoid eye contact, and use the left lane only when passing. And finally, use your horn sprightly. And finally, this is the biggest one ever, don't bring a gun, like in that previous video, it was all that person. He had a gun, he fired a warning shot. It could've been illegal, it could've been an illegal use for firing wherever he, wherever his state, his state was at, but I'm just glad. I'm just really glad that no one got hurt. He fired a warning shot. Now, this person, did he want to just sweep and call up, unless he was, remember the media? Okay, but if he wasn't, he could've just put down the phone, stopped the recording, called the police, and they would've taken care of it right away. Just right away. We wouldn't be having this. No, we wouldn't. Stay with us for more, give me a break. Back in September eighteenth in twenty twenty-one, we focused in on school board fights during the COVID nineteen pandemic. So when that happened, all people were fighting about all these mask mandates. But right after the pandemic, more of these fights happened happening. No, this isn't about... This is not simply about, you know, who's right, who's wrong. These two videos, these two videos are going to, I mean, this is all just chaos here. Taking this mother from, this is from Forbes. This viral video right here shows of a mother who confronts a board meeting at Unified School District. Take a look.
Aurora Regina? Just to acknowledge that you had signed up for the previous item, but I wanted to, I moved all of those to, to under this item.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Hi, for those that don't know me, my name is Aurora Regina, and I am the mother that filed a lawsuit in federal court against Chico Unified for transitioning my daughter without my knowledge. I'm here today to tell my story so parents and the public know what is going on in our schools. Last year, my eleven-year-old daughter was in elementary school here at Chico Unified, and our elementary school transitioned her from female to male behind my back. Shortly before this happened, my father had recently passed away, and I was diagnosed with breast cancer. My daughter was distressed and began questioning her sexuality, so she decided to reach out to a wellness counselor at her elementary school. The day my daughter shared her guidance, shared with her guidance counselor that she felt like a boy, the counselor immediately affirmed this new identity. From then on, the counselor continued to have one-on-one meetings with my daughter without my knowledge. During one of those one-on-one meetings, my daughter... During one of those one-on-one meetings, my daughter told the counselor she wanted to tell me about her new identity. The counselor ignored her request and did nothing to support her in letting me know what was going on at school. Throughout her transition, my daughter changed very quickly, was bullied, and as a result, was very unhappy. And because her school kept this transition a secret from me, she was on her own. I'm a busy, working mother, just like the rest of you. Before this happened to our family, I would have not believed this was going on in our schools, especially at the elementary level. I want everyone to know, I understand that I, I want everyone to understand that I want a space for LGBTQ and trans community members to feel safe and supported, but the policy currently in place at Chico Unified has been damaging to our family. And I am not up here talking about what could happen if you continue this policy. I am up here telling you what did happen to our family. This was a time when she needed me the most and you kept it a secret from me. I understand that you were trying to find ways to create a safe environment for all children within our district, but keeping secrets from parents is not the way to do it. Treating every parent as a potential threat to their kids is wrong. I know it's easy to make up a narrative when it comes to my case. I know it's easy for people to judge and say my daughter must have not felt safe or supportive. And that's the reason for telling her counselor. But regardless of what the people say, I love my children and there isn't anything they could ever do to change that. I wouldn't, it wouldn't have mattered to me whether my daughter continued to identify as a male, I would love her the same. It's a slippery slope to allow any adult in our schools to keep secrets from parents for any reason. The actions the school board district took to immediately exclude me from supporting my daughter was very damaging to her and our family. She was very young and didn't understand what being transgender really meant or the obstacles she would face going through a transition. The school transitioned her and left her to figure it out on her own. It seems to me the district is getting it wrong on both sides. You don't know how to handle these very serious and sensitive situations. Because once you transitioned her, you left her to handle it all by herself, the bullying and the staff even outing her. Thank you.
So basically, it's all about board members sweeping the parents on the rug and not caring about the kids. Every parent want, wants what's best for their child. And that's what this whole board was talking about, was all these fights that have been happening, I mean, it's not even these school board fights that are happening all about the pandemic years ago. No, this is about what happened years ago. Do you remember years ago what happened when? Do you remember some years ago when um this parent, this community, remember this member, this member, the, sorry, this member of the community came before the board angry because of what happened and said, well, this and this. That's what happened. Watch.
And just to look at you is just so difficult. I hear these fiery speeches and we're sorry, well, sorry is a little late. And to not be angry is, is, it's not my child, I'm angry for those people, for those parents. I'm angry for everybody else. Your stories about children being I think how election time it needs to be not just history granditigos, but that principle needs believing. Assistance and superhand needs believe, and you all need to be replaced. Maybe not, maybe what we need is less education, more common sense. Because common sense, same to me, that teacher had been rubber rooms, would have been gone, this would have been out in the public. And it wasn't going to handle properly because what we're doing right now is, is bouncing off the wall. I've never seen so much anger. And people that I consider to be so tame and pacifistic, I've never seen anger. I'm looking at mothers that walk around the corner and they want to rip your arse off. And it's just an abomination I see from you. I just, I just, I can only say you're lucky it was not my child. You're fortunate it was not my child, that son of a grandkid. So you need to really get it together. Because I can guarantee the conversations I've had in the election time comes up and we know everybody's name. And you need to make it happen because I just don't see you being in a relationship.
Coming up, we're gonna look at more of these school board fights that have been happening right after the pandemic. Including this mother, this person who was very angry, and this community member. This community member who forced a school board member to leave. Sounds kind of crazy, right? Stay with us and you'll find out. Two years ago, this person was at a school board meeting when he brought up critical race theory, CRT, and he brought up some very good points in that meeting. It was a black father. Take a look.
Critical race theory, when you talk about critical race theory, which is pretty much gonna be teaching kids how to hate each other. How to dislike each other. It's pretty much what it's gonna all come down to. You gonna deliberately teach kids, this white kid right here got it better than you because he white? You gonna purposely tell a white kid, oh, the black people are all down to suppress, how do I have two medical degrees if I'm sitting here oppressed? No mom, no dad in the house, worked my way through college, sat there and hustled my dog to get through college, you gonna tell me somebody that looked like all y'all white folks kept me from doing that? Are you serious? What's sick about this whole thing is what y'all doing right now is already something I do in my community right now to speak out against stuff because black folks are getting told by other black folks, oh, you ain't gonna be able to do nothing out there in the world because white folks ain't gonna let you get no, oh, you ain't gonna be able to do anything because you know, the white, the white man, the white man gonna keep you down. Well, how did I get where I am right now if some white man kept me down? How am I now directing over folks that look just like you guys in this room right now? How? What, what, what kept me down? What oppressed me? I worked for myself from office streets to where I am right now. He gonna sit here and tell me this lie, a critical race theory? Of this, this, this reason why black folks can't get ahead because of white folks? Are you kidding me? This is what we come to now? I can't believe we even talking about this right now. The last thing I'm gonna say right here is something that's crazy. Martin Luther King said he wanted his kids to grow up in a world where they are judged by the contents of their what? Not their skin. If they letting this stuff going right now, it is absolutely going to complete reverse of what he's doing. So when February comes, don't talk about Martin Luther King. When February comes, don't talk about black people, my dog will sit there and just be must pee on his grave with this nonsense. That's exactly what's about to happen. When it all comes down to it, the person's gonna be suffering from this, the ones gonna be hurt from this is the kids. Ten years from now, if this stuff goes on, whose fault is it gonna be? Whose fault is it gonna be? Who we gonna look back on to blame for this? Because this is stuff we talking about right now. This stuff is going on right now. I do this stuff on the day to day. I'm in the hood, I'm in the communities. I'm out there with folks in their face. I've been doing stuff since I was eighteen years old, talking to black folks. You know what? None of them are buying this nonsense. None of them are. But if you wanna implement this into the school system, I guarantee you to the day that I die, I'm gonna be the very person right there debunking this stuff, tearing stuff down, letting them know they can do exactly what I did, get exactly where I am by putting themselves work and getting there. Ain't that a one white person ever? Don't keep any of them from getting there. So CRT stuff BS.
Hey, this is all from Newsweek. I mean, he makes a very good point. This is about race. I mean, if you wanna claim school boards are being racist about this crap, then go right ahead. I mean, that's what parents and communities do. They, they stand up to the board and say, well, this and this and this and that. And if you remember almost two years ago, if you remember, if you remember, if you remember, if you remember last year, all the people were at the Uvalde school, school board meeting to discuss about what had happened during Uvalde shooting. Now, we've already played you some bits of the board meeting, we'll have the field on Throwback Thursday. But there is now more of these board fights are happening. Last year, this outrageous, this outraged parent delivers a very
So what it is uh that makes uh drag?
This, this outraged parent gave a powerful speech to Union School District over a drag show event. The caption says, "Parents lit up at the uh Incanas Unions EUSD As they send an invite to all families for a family-friendly drag show sponsored by a San Francisco General Reassignment Surgery Center and a twenty-one plus gay nightclub." Have they been smoking crack? While do, while, have they been smoking crack while eating cheeseburgers with chili cheese and bacon on it? I hope they haven't. Take a look.
But what, I just wanna know what it is uh that makes uh drag show family friendly? Because if you follow it to its logical conclusion, you can slap family friendly titles on anything. You can have family friendly gentlemen's clubs, family friendly strip shows, family friendly Fifty Shades of Grey, Real House, will you approve my flyer if I want to host in All the Sex Secrets of the Kama Sutra for kids and families if it's family friendly? My question. What is it about a grown man, and I honestly sincerely as a woman mean this, what is it about a grown man costumed in a sparkly bra with augmented boobs busting out, a leather miniskirt barely covering his twerking ass with tuck tape on his front while spreading his fish netted legs as he rides on the ground, grinding his groin next to a minor? Family friendly? You owe us an answer. And you know, you don't get to hide by just taking something down off Peachtree and calling it a day. You owe an explanation and apology to everyone. And while we have a culture that have a massive problem with child porn, with sex trafficking, you, a rural school district's board of adults made the decision to feature an event to hyper-sexualize young children. Do you wanna know that the word that defines that? It's groomer. You all play the activist pimp for an aligned surgical center and for a twenty-one plus gay bar. And they choose groomers and activist pimps, and we won't have those sitting on a school board who oversees the education of our children. You all stepped out of line, you should be ashamed, there's nothing loving, there's nothing, let's unite and include. Because the logical conclusion of that is you end up in diabolical evil. There are boundaries and you don't slap family friendly titles on stuff to cover your ass.
What a good statement. Even powerful. Even very powerful, a very powerful A very powerful statement indeed from this woman. Cause she knew everything she was talking about, because that was my child. In that event, I wouldn't wanna know about it. I mean, it was killed. Remember, remember this woman right here? That's what I'm gonna show you on Throwback Thursday to where this woman showed a picture of a school board member without a mask. That was during the pandemic, that was a year ago. But this, but this one really takes the cake. And in all the seven years we've done the broadcast, we've talked about school board fights for two years, for back in twenty twenty one, but this literally takes the cake. Yeah, it really does take the cake here. I mean, look at all these comments. The last part, "You don't slap family, family friendly titles on stuff to cover your ass?" That lady killed it. This is why I call an empowered woman, one that stands up to protect her family. Straight up disgusting, everyone involved is, is saying this up, should be sued, fired, thrown in jail. They should be ashamed, they should be jailed. Way to go, girl. Hold those shorts accountable for perverted actions. Vote them out. Thank God for parents like this who have discouraged. Well done, Brittany Meyer. She should have started YT channel and social account talking about this insanity if she hadn't done so already. We need more people like this standing up for these woke school boards. She's straight to the point, confident, legit, angry, and well spoken. If my kids were still, will still, I would be speaking at these schools as well. Can't imagine this being as happening in elementary schools just a few years ago. Doesn't get any more cringe. Family friendly? Not my family. It's sick and the school board is accountable. Amen. Will women speak now against this shit is what we need. And we can just play this over and over again in front of every single school board across the nation as we take the entire public school system back. This woman is without weakness, all bases covered. She's a monster looks intelligence for articulate, passionate, she's a girl, she should be in Congress. Finally, I'll be a woman. God bless his precious mother, save our children. Amen. Preach it. Good job, mom, I'm so proud of you. Now, this one got a hundred and seventy-two thousand views. But can you ever imagine something like this happening at your school? I mean, if that happened, you'd wanna be, you wanna be a concerned, you wanna be a concerned parent raging about this in your next board meeting. Saying, hey, why are you allowing this to happen? This happened last year.
And as parents are demanding answers from the Encinitas Unified School District, Jacksonville District a flyer promoting a boot bash, that's called the Queerest Family Friendly Drag Show. And joining me now to talk more about Tuesday upcoming rally is a concerned mother and community activist, Harry Prejean, Boiler. Good morning, it's an honor to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, when I saw this flyer on Friday, my heart just like, just, it was just awful. Um, it's kind of offensive hearing that there's a drag show coming up called the Queerest Family Friend, Family, Family Friendly Event. Tell us about it.
So when I heard about this, my jaw hit the floor. I was outraged at this. I, I was like, there, there, there has to be a mistake, has to be a mistake. The fact that the Encinitas Union School District sent this out to every parent in the district for kindergarten through sixth grade is absolutely appalling. The fact that they sent this out and they, they said opportunities for your child. So by then, then sending this out proves that they had approved it. And so we as parents are outraged about this. The fact that it's a family friendly drag show, I don't know about you, but I've never seen a family friendly drag show. I've never seen a family friendly strip show. We don't want either. And so parents are outraged about this and we want answers. We wanna know how this got approved and we want accountability. The school district has not taken any responsibility at all. And so we're gonna hold a rally on Tuesday and we want the community to show up and show, show their support for us.
But for a school to have an event like this and use the term queerest, many parents, um, we have been reaching out too, saying it's just so offensive. And who is this even sponsored by?
Thank you for asking. You are not gonna believe this. This is sponsored by a sex change surgical center in San Francisco called Aligned Surgical Center. Um, the fact that they think that us taxpayers are gonna provide the kids and ultimately become patients of theirs is a disgrace and they should be embarrassed. And we want answers, like I said, so this is not the end of it. This is just the beginning. Um, it's also sponsored by uh Rich's nightclub. It's a gay nightclub in San Diego. Um, if you look at the website for the event, it says that this event is specifically for trans kids and their families. Why is our kids, why are our kids being invited to this? If it's for trans kids, why are our children being invited?
When I saw the flyer on Friday, it just, I couldn't believe it. It just didn't make sense to me. Like, wait, what is this? A boot bash? You know, is this, is this for adults? But it's for children, it's just upsetting. So on Tuesday, you're hosting the rally. Who can attend?
Anybody that wants to attend can attend and we've already let them know that we will be there. Parents, taxpayers, um grandparents, we wanna invite the community to show up and we will be speaking and we will be asking them for answers. There's been many parents who have um emailed the school and they've refused to respond to any emails.
And how was this flyer sent out? Via email? Was it sent home with the kids?
Yes, so there's a, uh, it's called Peach Jar, so it's, it has to be approved by the district in order for, it's very strict. They have a policy where it can't be lewd, it can't be obscene, it can't be political, it can't be controversial. If this isn't lewd and obscene, a drag show and controversial, I don't know what is. So they violated their own policy. We do have a lawyer involved, uh Paul Jonah, he's been amazing. And he's gonna represent us parents because this is, this is not right. And it's time that the school district be held accountable for this violation of a parental right. We should be able to discuss what queer is to our kids, not the school district. They need to stay in their lane and teach reading, writing, math, and arithmetic and not talk to them about LGBT, trans, uh, what a sex change, none of that. Uh, what a sex change, none of that. It does not belong in our schools.
And when was this flyer sent out?
It was sent out a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, and this boob bash drag show is supposed to be on October twenty ninth Saturday.
Yes.
So far, since this has been, we talked about with among parents, what is the response that you're getting?
Oh, my gosh. It's, I've never seen the, even during COVID, I've never seen the amount of people. Reach out to me and the community because we have requested public records from the district. So we've seen emails, we've heard voicemails. We're entitled to all that as taxpayers. You would not believe the collusion that has gone on between the district principals in the district, calling parents homophobes. H O M E, you know, making fun of stay at home moms, saying that we're hateful, that they can't believe that we're not, you know, um. Understanding of the LGBT community. That's not what this is about. Like I said, we don't want strip strip shows and we don't want drag shows, period. This isn't political.
Yeah, and you being a mom and a community activist across the state. How are you feeling about education today? Because we're constantly talking about critical race theory, gender studies being pushed on kids. Uh, K through twelve. You being a mom and you're seeing what your kids go through, your your son and their friends. What do you think about education today?
I've already pulled my kids. It's unfortunate that I as a taxpayer can't my send send my kids to the school a minute away from my house. That's unfortunate. That's sad to me, but I have no choice because I'm not gonna send them to be indoctrinated every single day. They spend. You know, seven, eight hours with their teacher and this is what they're teaching? You know, we don't stand a chance as parents. If we don't educate them, someone else will, and they will indoctrinate them, which is exactly what they're doing, but we're not gonna let them get away with it. So I've pulled my kids. They're now homeschooled, but I know that not every parent has that luxury to be able to do that. So I'm standing up for those kids, you know, those parents who work two jobs that, you know, might not have seen the fine print of the flyer, but. They might send their kid not knowing that this is not appropriate for our youth.
We have a large group of parents in the district that are just not okay with this. There could be a chance the district may cancel this drag show coming up on October twenty ninth.
So it's not put on by the district, but they promoted it. So it's a community event, and the community person that is having this event. They're doubling down. They're saying that the the show will go on and that, you know, the drag show will go on and the queerest Halloween party of all and. Invite your kids. So that's their stance.
They're promoting it. Exactly. Yeah. Okay, so Tuesday night, you're having a rally at four thirty. Where exactly is it going to be?
Thank you for asking. Yes, it's gonna be at the Encinitas Union School District. We're gonna start the rally about four thirty. Uh, we'd like the press, the press will be there. Um, we're gonna actually have three board members who are running for office currently that are gonna be attending. Um, we're gonna have some um candidates running for mayor that are gonna be there. And we want this to be a nonpartisan event, so Democrat, Republican, whether you are, you know, for LGBT or against it. We wanna come together as a community. This is not what it's about. We're not gonna let them polarize us. This is about parental rights. And stop sexualizing our kids. That's what this is about.
I'm sure many of our viewers probably cringe here right now thinking, you've gotta be kidding me. A community event like this and the school district is promoting it. Yeah, well, Harry Prejean Bowler, thank you so much for your time. So good to see you. Nice to meet you too. Thank you.
This parent right here took the cake here, and now this parent, I mean, everybody takes the cake with this issue. It's all about the LGBK, and now. I mean, I'll be for a live Jason Aldean. Around here, we take care of our own. You cross that line, it won't take long. If you cross the line, let me tell you, if you cross the line, you cannot uncross it. Like Batman always says, Batman never crosses the line. He never kills. It's the code that you live by that matters. You don't wanna cross the line that you cannot uncross. Once you cross the line, there ain't no turning back. There's no turning back. I want you to just bash flower bluff. That's not what they want it from me. That's the current look. I'll do the shows. I'll, as long as I don't bash flower bluff, throw them under the bus. That's crossing the line. Good things happen. That's not crossing. If I talk about good things that happen in love and with the district, that's not crossing the line. But if I were to say bad things and throw them under the bus like, oh, they're a bunch of hypocrites who are just. Just wasting all their money so and so, that's crossing the line. And it sure hell is. Back in a moment. Now it's time for more than a thing. This time it's all about chocolate chip chicken. Nasty. Take a look at this and you'll see why it's nasty.
What's going on, everybody? Today we're making chocolate chip cookie drumsticks.
Chocolate chip cookie drumsticks? What's she making? A new dessert?
I'm feeling creative today. Never follow. That's the new motto. Take your paper towel and dry that chicken.
Wait, no, she talking about chicken?
After you just wash your chicken, you feel me? Now we're gonna season our chicken with salt and pepper. I'm black. Don't even get that thought.
I see that you're black. That's why I thought you knew better.
Just massage the chicken. Put all your chicken in a bowl, you feel me?
Why are you cooking so aggressive?
Now we gonna take that buttermilk and we gonna add it to our chicken. We gonna let our chicken sit.
Uh, ma'am, I can hear you. You ain't got the yell.
We gonna take our chicken and we gonna add it to the flour. Take our chicken again and we gonna add it to the buttermilk. Take our chicken again.
Stop, stop yelling.
Then we gonna add it to the flour again. Look at the crust. Ooh, you almost got me there.
I see the chicken look good. Stop right there.
Take your cookie dough and you're gonna flatten it up like this.
Just put that on a separate cookie sheet.
Take your chicken and wrap it inside the cookie dough.
No, no, oh, my stomach bubbling.
Oh, now we're gonna add it to the oven. Chocolate chip cookie drumstick.
Oh, she about to take a bite. Watch this, watch this, watch this, watch this.
Busting.
I'm gonna be busting the door down to that bathroom.
And I'm gonna be busting you in this show. That's give me a break for this Wednesday going to Thursday. We're off for Throwback Thursdays. We'll be back again next week Throwback Thursday, and we'll see you again for Give Me Break Friday. Depending on the for the playoff weather. Well, not exactly. We're not gonna do an outdoor show in the rain, but if it was, it'd be the very first time in all, like trying to get here and stuff. And for all of us here at YouTube, give me a break. Good night, everyone.